This is being forwarded in the market.
Yes, I'm exempt. Can you do that?
Yes.
Are we ready? Okay. It's working. Okay. Call to order, the meeting of the local planning agency and zoning board. Could we have a roll call please?
Rick Bertel.
Here.
Ed Mackowitz.
Here.
Dan Sullivan.
Here.
Michael Lentini.
Here.
Alan King.
Here.
Jean Allen excused absence. Aaron Trogger. Not present.
Okay, do we have any comments on the prior meeting minutes or would somebody like to make a motion on them?
They looked fine to me when I reviewed them, so there's no objection. I'll make a motion to approve the prior meeting minutes from March 24th.
Hey, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, that was easy. Okay, we have new business today. It's one thing built, two motions as it were, built into one thing. This is the rezoning request and small scale future land use amendment request. This is for 1501 South Miramar Avenue, 53 Tampa Avenue, 63 Tampa Avenue. And I believe that's it. What do we have from the board? Oh, they're not here.
I'm sorry. Yes, I was just going to state for the record, we do have some ex parte communication as it relates to citizen input. And we received emails from Marquita Fuchs, who opposes. John, excuse me, Joy and Dawn Hess, who opposes. Janet Letchworth, who opposes. Susan Abbott, who opposes. Gary Letchwork, who opposes. Mary Benjamin, who opposes. Calvin and Nancy Marshall, who oppose. David Flogelberg, who supports. Andrew and Georgiana Kerfut, who supports. Frank and Sarah John, who supports. Tara Garkowski, who supports. Marquita Fuchs, I mentioned earlier, she sent a second email, as well as Gary Letchworth. We have Patty and Barry Weiss, who oppose. Janet Letchworth sent a second email. Joy Hess sent a second email. Dawn Hess opposes, and he was part of the original email with Joy Hess. Shelley Johnson supports. Christina Miller supports. Deborah Heckman opposes. William and Janice Nutt oppose. Robert Steffel oppose. And Andrew Lamore oppose. And those emails will be attached as part of this record.
Thank you very much. I wanted to go over one thing with the board and also the audience just to understand what we're doing to some of this. This property is three different addresses owned by two different people. They're both asking for the same thing, and that is a change to tourism, tourist district. We're going to, when it comes for a motion, there's going to be two motions asked for. If the first one dies, the second one doesn't need to be, and there's the small scale amendment, and then there is the rezoning. So if the small scale amendment does not go through, there's no need to have a vote on the zoning because that would not be able to go through. Just to understand what we're doing on that. All the same thing, but two different ways we have to do it. Do we have any comments from the board?
I think I will. I would like to, if we're going to hear from either the town's perspective or the audience first before I get into my thoughts.
Okay.
Before we get started, I need to, oh, never mind.
Cliff, is there anybody that wants to go over what the town came up with, with the town's opinions?
As far as what the planners wrote?
Yes, what the planners' ideas and recommendations are.
Good evening. I'm Margaret Embleach. I'm the planner representing the town. I came into this a little late, but I will say that I had the opportunity to review the previous staff report that was written for 1501. And I went through the comprehensive plan and your land development code. And more recently, I concluded that the recommendation should change from our, from the staff's perspective based on some additional information that I was made aware of from other staff. And, you know, I apologize for the short, you know, time of the change in the recommendation. But the, part of it has to do with, the comprehensive plan has very clear goals, objectives, and policies that talk about protecting the single-family areas within the town. And in addition to that, there was an ordinance that was adopted by the town right before the state preempted the town from, from, well, all jurisdictions in the state preempted them from restricting short-term rentals in single-family homes. Now, I didn't realize that, I didn't know that that was an actual ordinance for the town. And the reason why I bring that up is that I was under the, under, I was thinking that the single families throughout the town would be allowed to have short-term rentals based on the state's preemption. But having learned that there was an ordinance that the, that the town specifically adopted, and it still applies, that the, that single-family homes are restricted from having short-term rentals. So that's, that's the primary basis of the change, having new information. And again, I apologize for the short turnaround for this, and I'm available for any questions.
Very good, thank you. And just, I'm sure everybody here has read, read the newest recommendations from staff and from the engineer, is that to deny this because of the different reasons that was just mentioned and how it doesn't work for what we've got going on. Does anybody else like to hear the audience first, or would you like to talk first, or?
I mean, I'd like to ask Margaret a few questions if I could.
Yes.
And I appreciate your explanation because, quite honestly, it was puzzling to me how the day before this hearing, I think it was, it's dated yesterday.
Yes.
That we get a, an engineering analysis that's 180 degrees different from the one that was done several months ago. Were you involved in the previous one at all? It sounds like.
I was not.
Okay.
Well, sorry.
So of that previous one, I mean, our comprehensive plan has been our comprehensive plan. I don't think there's any changes in that, right?
Correct.
The, you said the other issue was the ordinance that, that we have precluding the short-term rentals. That aside, take that out of the equation. I still am puzzled how your report, the original report, could have viewed favorably for this change simply on the comprehensive plan and the tourist zoning and all of the different param, allowances within that zoning. Is there any thoughts on that?
Well, yes. I, I'm a professional planner. I'm a certified planner. The previous person that wrote the staff report for 1501 is a planner, or, but is now retired. It was his professional position that it was an appropriate request. My review of all of the documents and of the recent information that, and discussions with staff, which just occurred this past week, based on that new information and looking closer at the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan, I, my opinion changed and my recommendation changed. And that was because of this would create an impact to the adjacent residential uses. And right now, there, actually, there's a transition from the current properties with the public parking area and then the resort that's immediately north. By, if, if you were to approve this, this would put the high-density residential designation and, if I may, with the zoning, it would allow additional commercial uses, not just multifamily. And looking at what the applicants were asking for was that they were planning on going forward with multifamily and rentals. But you have to look at what the other uses that are permitted in the zoning and the land use category would support all of those commercial uses that are permitted. Just like all the properties that are immediately north of these properties are in that same high-density residential district. And I'm sure you're aware of all the different types of uses that are existing. And so it was, after further review, the position changed.
And I think you're making my point, is that all of the reasons that you mentioned, other than the short-term rental, were all already known, should have been known reasons. All of the things that that property could turn into under a tourist zoning, irrespective of the ordinance for the short-term rental, all of those things, the position of it, the fact that you have the buffer to the north, the tourist to the north, residential houses immediately to the south, all those things were known, but yet we get a report that says this should be approved. And my concern with that is, we take, we take, I think, our due diligence and we look at each one of these questions that come in front of us. We don't rely solely on the engineering report, but we do look at it and rely to a certain degree.
You just said, this makes more sense.
Well, there's a reason.
So the old city planner was not good for the city?
Yeah, just, just so you do understand, the report that we got first and the report that we have second are things that, what Ed just said, it's something that we review and we take into consideration. And we usually put a pretty good amount of weight on it when we're thinking about it, but we don't make our decisions based upon that report. We make decisions upon the fact that that's what we do every day. You know, we, we're the ones who read the code all the time. We're the ones who have the people in front of us all the time. And we're the ones who have to make the decision on what the people think or don't think, or, you know, how it's good or bad for the, for the people. So.
Okay.
That report, I think what Ed was saying, the report itself, the first one made him scratch his head and it made me scratch my head because I was like, well, interesting because it just was a toughie of what you can do with tourism zoning is a lot more. And it's different when, originally, there was one applicant, the first applicant, I think, was that you, I guess?
That's me. The witch was supposed to be, ended up being spot zoned.
Right.
And then they read the same, then they redid for 53, 63.
Right.
On his own application.
Yeah, so the position of big question you have, which is very abnormal, it doesn't happen like that, usually there's, there's two planners that look at something for us. It happened and her, the last one we have pointed out, actual real situations, if you read the entire zoning and everything, it points out things that should have been pointed out in the first place. I hate to say it. But one way or the other, it's up to this board to make a decision based upon what we hear today, what, how we read everything. And that's how we'll do it. But it is very, I feel bad it happened to you because you walked in here, I think, thinking yesterday that you're walking in here with a much easier approval situation.
Eleven o'clock this morning, actually.
Yeah, yeah. But that doesn't mean that everybody on this board hadn't looked and done their own research on it, just so you know.
So why did we receive it at 11 o'clock if you already had it?
No, no, I meant our own research of what we think before we even read either, anything.
So you, when did you guys receive the report?
I got mine at three o'clock this afternoon, so.
Three o'clock?
I got mine, I got mine when you got yours.
Yeah.
And if I can, Ms. Mosley, we did offer, and I attempted to reach you, I think, twice from the town, to see if you wanted additional time.
True.
So if you need that additional time, I'm going to still, you know, make it known that you are welcome to take that time. And your, your feedback has been received, understandably, I think the board is acknowledging this is not the typical situation, which is why I personally reached out to you this morning.
Yeah, but rest assured, just so you know, positively for sure, there's no question, we do not make our decisions solely based on these reports. They, the reports from the staff and the reports from the planners, we take into consideration, but we make our own mind up on it all the time.
So our statements when we filled out our applications, I hope you guys have read. There's nothing in there about rebuilding on those properties. I have a triplex. I don't know if you are aware of that. And I have plenty of parking for that area. So that's not a problem with parking. I just see that a lot of people are confused. They're all looking at that we're going to put a hotel, or we're going to put all these units in there. That is not what we applied for.
Oh.
I'm applying because my lot is non-conforming.
Right.
To where it is sitting. We live in a vacation zone every day. I have 32 units next to me. We're a whole different ballgame from what's on A1A and then what's on Tampa.
I know your property since I was in high school.
I reached out to all of you to come see it so you have an idea of what our life is.
Oh, I know it, and I just.
I don't think we affect anybody south of us.
Yeah. Well, to answer your question a little bit, because we haven't even polled anybody here who's for or against it yet, and we haven't heard the public yet. I heard a list there that, but that was about it. And what we look at is not just what you're asking for.
Right.
I just want you to understand that because somebody, when they look at your application, somebody like me, who's been going there since high school, went surfing there and hung out, have watched everything going on with Rock Shores or Tuckaway.
So you know the changes.
It made, it makes complete sense for you and what you've been dealing with and what you've got going on. I see that. But some of also what we have to look at is that when all the properties on your little block are put together, you have to also look at what you want to do, which might not cause anything, and then what would happen if somebody bought everything and decided to do whatever the highest level of that zoning is. And I think that's.
And what is the highest level? One more unit on my property? Four units? If that was to happen?
On all the property, you could build, you could build something bigger.
That's the max, is max four.
Yeah.
It's stated in the paperwork. And I think for Godwin, with all the setbacks, I don't know how four would ever go there.
It's not going to be a huge hotel if somebody raised it all.
Thank you. I know, that's been.
But, and you have to, that's good to bring up. It's not huge, but it is, different things can happen, and that's what we see happen in town sometimes, just so you know.
Jacob? So, we'll hear what you have, I want to hear what you have to say.
Okay, we'll, we'll bring you back up if you'd like.
Okay.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Okay, is Ms. Godwin here? Would she like to speak?
Actually, McHugh.
McHugh, sorry.
Yeah, I don't need to speak anymore.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a couple of people who put some speaker cards that want to talk, and that's Andrew Lamore. We have a three-minute limit. Name and address, please.
All right, thanks for hearing me. I realize I don't know a lot of the fine details of this, so I'm going to make an appeal just from my experience here in Indy Atlantic. I bought about 15 going on 16 years ago. We've been privileged and have loved the experience of having a street with permanent residents, meeting people. Dr. Sullivan was our ENTs in the neighborhood. My children have lasting relationships with kids that they got to grow up with. I, I don't want that to change. I'm obviously getting of age, my kids will graduate soon, but I even want that to be passed on to people in the future. I want you to, to please fight to keep it that way as much as possible. I want Indy Atlantic to, to stay for families and for people, and I don't want it used for profit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gary Jones?
Thank you very much. My name is Gary Jones. I'm owner of 1601 South Miramar Avenue, and I am opposed to this zoning change and think it is a mistake to allow this to occur. The proposed zoning is not compatible, as the planner has confirmed, to the surrounding properties, and more importantly, the town has an ordinance that restricts single-family residences from becoming a short-term rental. I assume we'd have to change that law in order to overrule and make any zoning changes. The applicant's request to change the zoning from R1A to tourist also includes a concurrent request to change the future land use of this parcel with a desire to develop short-term vacation rentals. It's unclear as to what these future development plans might entail, but could include clubs, lodges, bars, restaurants. And again, these plans are not compatible with the overall fabric of the zoning. Currently, there are only nine single-family residences remaining in Indy Atlantic, south of Tuckaway Shores. And any further reductions to this valuable housing stock can be devastating. The changes and challenges experienced in other communities like Daytona Beach and New Smyrna Beach are prime examples of a zoning disaster that could have been avoided. Any changes in rezoning this parcel from R1A to tourist also sets a very dangerous precedent for future applicants that may want to follow suit. If this is passed, there would be nothing that would prevent the next neighbor and the next neighbor and the next neighbor to file to come in and potentially participate in this madness. Do we want to continue and expand this concrete jungle from Tuckaway all the way down to Milver Beach? Lastly, the current boundary that separates the T zoning from the R1A zoning residence is a public street, Tampa Avenue, that ends into the public parking at the ocean. That is a very logical boundary that delineates the tourists from the residential section. Any effort to carve into a block to form a tourist versus resident, single-family residential line or border establishes and creates major confusion. Can you imagine if this was approved and next door, I think it's Mr. DeJeanne, would be residential, yet this property with no primary boundary, other, the beach access certainly provides that and the parking area? So I am strongly opposed to this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello there.
Hi.
Jacob Mosley, 1501 South Miramar. My mother submitted the application initially as the property she lives in is non-conforming, and her initial desire was to have the property conform to the city's comprehensive plan. The property, all three parcels were initially one folio by the town and was manufactured in 1954, which is eight years predating the city ordinances that are now governing and affecting this. My concern with what is existing here is that this property faces 10 units of Tuckaway Shores. Tuckaway Shores is a 32-unit hotel or motel, whatever you choose to call it, and is adjacent to a recreational area, the sea park. The number of individuals who traffic up and down the area and interact with the face of this property does not put it in the same light as the seven residential homes to the south of it, which have egress and egra, ingress and egress from 1501, but rather, we have ingress and egress from Tampa Avenue, adjacent to the parking and the park there. The unique configuration, design, and structure and initial, original purpose of the property is not something that is equivalent to the single-family homes to its south. The original plan of the property was multifamily use, whether owned or rented. While it was under one folio, the assumption would be that individuals were renting those properties and restoring this property to Zone T would bring it back in line, conforming, and allow it to perform its original land use function, which predates the ordinances. I have a couple of questions as well for Margaret. I don't know if my time will allow it, if we will pause that for her to answer.
Go ahead, yes.
Okay. First off, you stated that you weren't involved in the, the original publication that was provided?
Correct.
Then, for the 1501 South Miramar, I agree with you on that. However, for the initial recommendation for 53 and 63 Tampa, you and your company, LJA Engineering Incorporated, did create the proposal that said approval, there would be de minimis involvement or encumbrance to city planning, the comprehensive plan, the density, or the neighbors. In your initial report, and I can cite the page files as well if necessary, is that, is that true, that your initial analysis was that it was de minimis?
The de minimis was referring to impacts to traffic, impacts to public services. That's what I was referring to.
Okay. Now, when I looked here on page 42 of the initial report, your recommendation for the com, for the. your recommendation for the com, uh, for the Godwin property, which you were not involved in the fifteen oh one South Miramar, but for parcel fifty-three and sixty-three A, one point oh and one point oh one in the town plan, was approval. Is that correct?
Initially, it was.
Okay. And what prompted the reevaluation exactly?
I had further discussions with staff, um, basically to, um, where I learned more information and looked at, um, not only the ordinance that I talked about, but also looking at the, um, the, the pattern of development, again, that's existing. And, um, I had a different opinion on whether it should be approved or not.
What prompted this renegotiation of the terms of your proposal that made you reevaluate the entirety of the?
I think I just said that, that I had, um, I had.
You submitted your report, and I'm asking why you decided to reevaluate it. Why was there a further discussion following your submission?
I had a discussion with staff subsequent to the staff report, and I learned more about what, um, historically with the city regarding the ordinance I spoke of, and also talking more about the pattern of development. And I will say, in all honesty, um, looking at what the property owners stated, what they wanted to do, and what the reality of what could be developed there based on the proposed, or the desired zoning was, um, was another reassessment from my perspective on whether it was appropriate or not.
Would that not be a slippery slope if the town would have ample opportunity to stonewall those things through site plan review or other actions before the property could be converted from residential to a family?
Jacob, um, you can start addressing stuff to us now.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes. Um, when I looked at the original, uh, city plans from LaRue's report, you, as the committee, have stated that he was your planning committee proposal or planner for a number of years. He would be vested, knowledge, and very well entrenched in the information, laws, and regulations of this town if he had been working for you for a number of years. My question is, why his opinion would be superseded by someone who has just recently been hired in his stead, and that his evaluation would be dismissed in such a capacity?
I think I answered that when I was talking to your mom, but the answer to that question is, whatever we read from the planners, we take as part of what we are looking into. The people you're looking at now at the board are the ones who make up our own minds. So your point of going to attacking her report or the, or getting rid of the other one is not necessary, because the board here will be making their own decisions.
I understand you take the information in stride, and you make your decision from that information. However, I also heard Edwin earlier say that the first report was erroneous, which calls into question his thoughts of the credibility of what, uh, LaRue stated in his initial proposal, which is somewhat concerning to me.
I understand.
I think for transparency purposes, and I'm not sure, I know this is a smaller community, so forgive me if people already know this, but Mr. LaRue retired, so he was no longer available to provide an opinion when the applications changed. So if there's any concern about why he is suddenly missing, it is nothing.
My, my question is not to why he is missing.
Okay.
My question is to why we have just called into question his.
Understood.
His application and information provided to you, that I assume previous planning boards have used his, um, planning proposals to call his information erroneous. That is somewhat suspicious to me.
Okay, I think we've reached time.
Yeah, thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I do wanna make something clear from what, uh, Jacob was just saying, that we all need to remember. One way or the other, the property, I think one of the things that you were trying to do in the very beginning, the applicant, is to fix a nonconforming property, because she's in a true single-family residential district right now, and has always had, since before the town started, a multifamily property. So I think part of what you're doing, I believe, has been trying to fix that issue. I just wanna make it clear that, you know, this is the way, I think, that you're trying to do that, is to get it to where it becomes.
Conforming.
Conforming to what you want, but wha, what, I just wanna make that clear, whether, whether that's the right way to go or it's a different way to go. I think that's what started this, but.
Also, if I can just speak to that, because, um, originally, um, Ms. Mosley's property is the only nonconforming property. So I think that was a principle that the original and singular application stood upon. Mr. LaRue's not here to talk about that, but certainly that may have been a factor.
That is true. It was the only, originally, it was the only, you were the only person that came in. I just wanted to clarify to everybody how it started and what, what you're trying to do, you know? I think that was it for that. Okay, that's new business. Okay, we'll bring it, bring, does anybody else wanna talk?
Hi, uh, Diogo Drades, uh, for twenty-eleventh Ave. I don't know if you do that here.
Yes.
Council. Okay.
Please. Address.
That for twenty-eleventh Ave.
Okay, in here, thanks.
So there's been a little back and forth, but there's still a couple of pieces of information. So you've mentioned several times, um, that you, new information came to light, but you haven't actually said what information came to light. I mean, I think Ed mentioned, uh, setting aside anything about particular ordinances. What new information? Am I allowed?
No, I, um.
Yeah, what new information?
I'll answer that, um, unless, unless you have something you wanna answer. But the, one of the big answers is reviewing our code and reviewing everything that has to do with, uh, comprehensive planning and everything.
Okay.
And seeing, in her opinion.
So just the code?
The code and the comprehensive planning, right, and seeing whether it fit or not, and that was her opinion.
Yeah. And, and then I guess my second question is directly to Ed, because Ed, you, you spoke very clearly that, that there were particular conclusions that you disagreed with. And, and can you speak to what particular conclusions that I guess that you disagreed with?
From the original report?
Correct.
Yeah, um, I was looking to see if I had it with me. It, um, if I recall, at first, it didn't answer the question posed to it. The question was, is the change from single-family to tourist a, uh, is it consistent with our comprehensive plan? And what it answered was, the usage that the applicant wants to do, if it were to be changed, meets the, the, the code for the tourist area. That right off the bat was, was the big thing. That report, and I know, um, Jim LaRue, just very minor, just from, from here, was something that I, whether he just misunderstood what was asked of them or not, I don't know.
You particularly disagree that it, that the proposed use fits the comprehensive plan?
The, the, the proposed change to tourist.
Yeah.
Yes. I specifically believe that. And we'll get into that in discussion, I'm sure, but, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, there, there were several points in, in that report that, um, were, were inconsistent with our, our plan. And so, like I said before, I'm, I'm, I'm grateful that it got what I believe to a point where it, it now accurately, accurately reflects, um, what our, what our, um, comprehensive plan.
No, I'm excited to hear that part. And then, um, there's two more points that I wanna make, and I don't know if this is also allowed, but they more address other points that were previously made. Uh, I think, uh, Lamore, you mentioned, you know, I don't want this town to be for profit. And I think that that is sort of inconsistent with, like, uh, an idea of, like, a free society that's able to do, like, good things, right? Like, I think that.
He's addressed the chair.
What's that?
He's addressed the chair.
Oh, okay, sure. Uh, and then I think that there was, uh, y, you know, I do think that is a reasonable ask. Like, I think that this lies, much like all of Wavecrest, right on, uh, public parking, that it is completely different than any of the lots to the south, that the justification for this does not meet any of the criteria for the south, and that it follows a pattern that's consistent with a lot of other lots. I heard also mention of slippery slope. I think that this is a bad faith argument that sort of just is a catch-all for no changes ought to be made, that basically says, oh, no, this will allow the dominoes to fall downstream. I don't really see how that's the case. There's definitely a pattern when you look at the zoning map, where you see one lot but another in different zones, multifamily next to single-family, because the lot that is multifamily is directly on the border and has a different character by that border. This is clearly that case to me. So, I mean, again, I'm excited to learn more, but I think the slippery slope argument that I've heard repeated is, um, is pretty bad.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else wanna speak on this subject?
Rick, how the heck are you?
Real good. Name and address, please.
Scott Smith. That's not my address. Three twenty-one Seventh Avenue. I'm gonna address the question this way, but how many behind me, see how cleverly I did that, have lived here since before nineteen sixty-one? Any hands? Oh, so I'm the longest.
We got one.
Oh, okay.
There you go. There you go.
So I'm gonna go out on a limb and say, I'm the oldest person who's lived here, and I've seen the changes more than anybody else can imagine, because I've been here longer. Guess what? Sucks. You drive through the town, it's not what it used to be when I was a kid. Property across from where I grew up, sorry, property I grew up, uh, across from used to be a completely open area of Indy Atlantic. Nobody was allowed to, to live there, 'cause it wasn't zoned for residential, 'cause it was too small. Guess what's happened since then? Oh, it's been rezoned. There's now three houses there. When it was originally zoned, only could have one house there. This is the property north of Genesee Avenue, technically the only, the most north street in Indy Atlantic fully, not to be confused with Watson, part of which isn't. This is a real no-brainer. And right off the bat, for anybody that doesn't understand how zoning and stuff works in a town, if you make a change right now, it affects everything. You can't go back and say, oh, but I wanted it just for this one thing. It changes everything. You wanna have a, uh, let's say, another surf shop right there? Right where that area is, it's nice and open. It's a, one of the few open areas we still have in Indy Atlantic. Why would we trash that? So it's a no-brainer. You make this change, you screw up the rest of the town. We all know that. That's what this is about. It's not because, why me? We don't wanna make a change. Doge comment, who in the world paid for the prior engineering report? I hope it wasn't me and my money. It's called a comprehensive plan because it's comprehensive. It's supposed to cover everything, not somebody wanting to make a minor change because they have a problem when they had a property that had the problem to begin with when they moved in. Single-family homes can't be used as rentals. Really? I have known properties in my house that are still being used as rentals right now, but yet they can't be. We also have structures that are not supposed to be living, places that are. And all of these things that are, are, are code, and yet those are violated. So if those get violated because of things not working right, and here we're gonna open it up and say, yeah, go ahead and do this, and we know it's gonna allow for all these changes, that's just kinda silly, right? And again, other than you, ma'am, I've lived here longer than anyone else.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think I'm gonna bring it back to the board.
May I say something?
Uh, yes, you may. Please, come back up and name and address.
I'm sorry, I forgot your name? No, the man that just fell.
Scott.
Scott?
Yes.
Since he's been here since sixty-one. So he probably knows what the Sea Ranch was in that property, because that all used to be under one par, uh, one parcel. So that was, how many units? Six units under one parcel, and then divided up later on. So it's changed, it's changed from what it was to what it is now, and we're trying to change it back somewhat to what it was. It's not like it was never that. So if he's been here that long, he would know that. Just saying.
I live nearby, right? I live by Genesee. That's the.
I did.
And another question on people that, uh, are for it and against it, are they all from the town of Indy Atlantic? Just curious on the emails. Those are people from our town, right?
I don't know off the top of my head. That's something I have to read into the record, but it's information proceeded. That information is in the emails. It's what we made part of the record.
Most of them are, 'cause I, I've received all the actual emails around them.
Could I get a copy of those?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, no problem. And for record purposes, I do wanna indicate that the prior reports, as well as the existing report that's currently attached to the agenda, we will make sure it's part of the record in its entirety.
Perfect, thank you. All right, we'll bring it back to the board. Can I have, uh, some comments? Does anybody have questions, comments, on what they think? Alan?
I have just one quick comment, and, and it has nothing to do with, with whether I agree with the first report or the second report. I ju, I do have a concern about the optics of it, which I think has been brought up, you know, that, you know, it just looks different. And I, I wanna be certain, and I guess we needed an opinion on this. When we all got this today, at whatever time, the applicant got it at the same time, I'm, I'm concerned about the optics of them not having a chance to review it, and, and we have a, a meeting and whatever. Should I be, am I out of line?
Uh, no, no.
Your question is valid, um, but I will say that Ms. Mosley was made aware this morning and given the opportunity by voicemail to reach out to me to reschedule this by motion for a date certain. As well as before the meeting, I sat down and spoke with her in person, conveying and confirming she received my voicemail. I made the same message to Mr. Godwin, who's not here, um, but my understanding is, is Ms. Mosley wanted to proceed. And Mr. Godwin's not here, so he obviously can't speak, but I did leave that message with him.
Great, thank you.
Can you comment to that?
Uh, give me, name and address again, just for the records.
Anne Mosley, fifteen oh one South Miramar Avenue. We had a zoning meeting planned prior for a spot zoning for me that was canceled. So I didn't want the community to think we're canceling another zoning meeting because of something nefarious. So I'd rather that the community sees what is happening and talk about it. So I thought it was best just to come in and have the meeting.
Ms. Mosley, would you like to make a, a request this to be continued to another date?
I'd like to hear what they have to say, or, or unless they're just gonna vote on it now.
If you want them to vote today, we will proceed. If you would like more time, then we will need to discuss moving this to another date.
I think we can give a couple of minutes to the rest. Yeah, we should, we.
Let's hear what she has to say.
Yeah.
It's two of us involved here, not just one, so you wanna wait? Okay, she wants to play.
Sorry?
Yeah. We wanna wait.
Okay, we can have discussion, and we'll wait for a vote.
Okay, we, we're gonna have discussion, then you can make up your mind. Perfect. All right. Anybody have anything more that they'd like to discuss, or any opinions on what they think?
Are we not making a decision tonight, then?
No, we might be, yes. We're, you know, we're proceeding as normal right now in discussion, and we might be doing, finishing it now.
I think we should let Ms., uh, Anne, whoever else, decide whether we should continue it off.
Um, well, we're not continuing with the vote yet. But I think I, in, in my opinion, I believe that if she wants to hear what we have to say, it's not a bad thing.
Ms. Mosley, would you like a recess to make a decision?
Could I have one?
Absolutely, yeah. We'll, we'll recess for.
Well, the only question I have is, you know, it's fine if she makes, if you guys make a decision to table it, that's fine, or put it off. But it might be easier if, if, to me, it would be easier if there's a discussion, if she can see which way and if, what the feelings are, because by no means does a decision of this board have anything to do with the report, and that keeps coming up. But at this point, the report's the report, and we've heard the report, and we've talked about the report. So I think it's, it's good for you, if you want, to hear the decision of what, what we think on the board, and then we'll let you make a decision if you want us to vote on it, or if you wanna put it off.
Can I ask you a question? Are you looking at these applications as two separate applications?
No.
Even though they are, been put in separately?
No, we're looking at it as one application, because it's rezoning. No. We're looking at it as one application, because it's rezoning. We would never, I'm not saying never, but I mean, if it was just your one piece sitting there, I don't see that that would get through, just rezoning your one piece.
Spot zoning.
I don't see that happening, but miracles could happen, but I don't see that happen.
Well, and historically, I believe, Ms. Mosley, you're the one who requested they be considered in one application at the prior hearing, which is
The councilman requested that we had a council meeting?
I know. I reviewed the video, yes. And my understanding is, is that was your wish for that to be
We decided to do that, because they thought it would be better to piggyback him on my application.
Correct.
Which, that is not what happened. He ended up having to fill out an application and submit money and do the whole
Because that's what the code requires.
But the city attorney
So, I'm not going to argue about it. I just want to remind you and everyone of the history.
I'm not arguing, I'm just seeing what occurred.
Yeah, so what we're going to do is have comments from the board. You can listen to what we have to say, and then before we vote, I'll have you come up and make a comment if you'd like, and if you have a request of what you might want us to do, then we'll take it.
Go from there.
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
I'll just say what I have to say.
Yeah.
One is if we table this, I'd like to see some new information brought, not just rehash the same arguments over again. The second is, I have little sympathy for people. Like, I don't mean this as a personal attack, but you bought a property with a known zoning issue, a comprehensive plan that's been in place, nothing's changed with that. And, yeah, I'm not in favor of rezoning anything. And I know historically, the town's done a lot of different things, but we're moving in a different direction now. When I showed up here 25 years ago, my general impression of this town was that it was run by developers. Our mayor was the developer at that time, right? And he approved a bunch of things that would not get approved, that were not consistent with the plan, like all those yellow condos. And, you know, yes, we did start enforcing things much more strictly, and that's a good thing, I think, for the town. You know, you put rules in place, and they need to be followed. And this is what everybody voted for, and this is what they want, and, you know, it's what's been approved. And, you know, I view my job here as enforcing that, nothing more.
Thank you.
So, let me just kind of then now take an opportunity to go through what my analysis of this was when I was first given the original package, the original application, the original engineer's report. So, as far as consistency with the comprehensive plan, goal number one of our comprehensive plan is maintain and perpetuate the primarily low-density residential character of the town, with all other uses of land being secondary in nature, while at the same time, providing for commercial and professional areas to meet the needs of the residents. That's the number-one listed goal in the plan. It goes on in Policy 1.5, maintain the existing zoning pattern. Maintain the existing zoning pattern, which protects the single-family areas from the encroachment of incompatible uses, and which provides for a mix of residential and non-residential use, consistent with the low-density residential character of the town. You then go to our zoning code, which applies to us as well as that comprehensive plan, Section 113.2, Purpose and Provisions of our zoning. Number one, lessen congestion in the streets. Prevent the overcrowding of land. Avoid undue concentration of population. It says this chapter is to be construed to, one, preserve and enhance the one-family residential character of the town, making provisions for such other uses as will contribute to this end. And, number two, prohibit such other uses as would be in conflict therewith, and strictly limit the intensity and extent of permitted uses, the intensification and expansion of which would detract from the predominantly one-family residential character of the town, impair property values, or disturb the sense of security of community character that is an inseparable part of the enjoyment of the ownership of property. Those are the criteria that I believe we, as the board, have to put forth in considering any zoning change. This zoning change is for tourists, single-family to tourists. There's a myriad of uses allowed in tourist zones, clubs, lodges, hotels. I understand the intended use, but that doesn't preclude that if a change in mind occurs, or a sale of the property occurs, the fact remains that it is now, and forever will be, a tourist zone if it's changed. The location of the property, I think, also needs to be considered. The fact that immediately to the north is this sea park, public access, in my mind, that's a natural transition from single-family to the tourist area to the north of that. Immediately to the south, I think separated probably by a fence or a wall, is a continuation of single-family homes. Increasing the density means just that. You now increase population, you've increased traffic, you've increased usage of water, you've increased usage of sewer, you've increased usage of solid waste disposal. All of these facts put together were missing from that first report, which is why I was going to mention, before getting this new report, mention that to, not override, but to minimize the consideration of that report, that I felt it was not truly representative of what the question was in front of that engineer. And with all due respect to Jim, I appreciate Margaret stepping in to take another look at it. The report is the report, the new one, the old one, whatever, but the facts don't change what that analysis was that I just went through, based on our comprehensive plan and our zoning code. So, you can tell which way I will vote, if there's a vote tonight.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board?
I agree, actually, with your evaluation of that previous report. I did some of the same inspection myself, and felt that there were some gaps in evaluating the zoning as a whole, and its compatibility with the surrounding area. I think, like you mentioned earlier, it was focused on the use. You know, whether or not we agree that residential use is compatible, there is other allowed uses in that tourist zoning. That natural transition location, I agree with that evaluation as well, being at Tampa, you know, you know, I guess that that probably speaks to my position on the application request as well.
Thank you.
I did have a couple of questions, though, I guess beyond that. From a historic perspective, and from like a non-conformity perspective, because often, right, you'll see transitional zonings, that this, to me, is not also transitional. It goes from a commercial to, you know, low-density single-family. From a timeframe perspective, this property historically has been used as a multifamily structure and use. Is that, is that correct, basically, from its onset in, what was it, 1954, or something like that?
Yes.
So, the portions of our code, then, that allows for non-conforming uses to continue, if they were before the application of the zoning code, that then applies to this property?
Yes. The non-conforming use, there's a few properties in Indy Atlantic that are non-conforming, all old, all still there. And the rules are, they can keep having that non-conforming use, as long as that building is there, and as long as it's not a particular amount of it is destroyed.
Okay. Because I was reading through that section, right, where basically, from what I am reading, right, alterations, a non-conforming building or structure, it may be altered, or improved, or reconstructed, provided that it doesn't increase the non-conformity. So, they can make improvements to the building, as long as it doesn't increase the square footage. Is that fair to say?
Yes, they can do that. The real issue that exists for anybody with a non-conforming building, because I happen to have owned one in Indy Atlantic, and the only thing that scared me, which is scary, but I bought it knowing it was non-conforming, is that if a hurricane comes by, or if it catches on fire, and beyond a certain amount of it disappears, they could be in danger of not being able to keep the non-conforming going. So, that's a good reason for anybody with one to try to figure out what they can do to become conforming, but that's just a subject on that one issue.
Okay. Yet, I wasn't sure how that, what that level of reconstruction then might entail. But, so the non-conformity
Just add to that?
I'm sorry?
I just wanted to point out that there are certain uses that are temporary, and unless they remain consistently without any broken timeframe of use
Right.
Then, if the temporary use is not throughout the duration of the code change, that temporary use doesn't get grandfathered in.
If it's vacant for a period of time, or something like that?
Correct. Or short-term rental, or something of that nature. Those are temporary uses. So, there is some consideration where that's not an automatic grandfather decision.
Okay. No, I was just kidding.
Or at least I should say, arguably. Of course, lawyers could find reasons either way, but I figured I'd point that out, because that is a discussion.
Anybody else? Okay. Well, we told you that you could come back up and see what you want to do, and the reason was, I wanted to hear what everybody had to say, and so did you, I believe. If you guys, for some reason, did want to pull this off the agenda, I would still give you the opportunity. But if you bring it back on, I would also say that the only way to bring it back on would be with some new light that has not been discussed, or something that we don't know about, or something that's totally different. So, I'd let you come
I'm not going to delay. You guys make your decision, and we'll go from there.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to give you the opportunity. Thank you very much. All right.
This, I mean, am I understanding, though, that this is our recommendation to council? Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, when I request a motion, which I'm going to do, the first one will be the small-scale amendment to the comprehensive plan. They're both for exactly the same thing, but two different motions, because there's two different subjects, one's the comprehensive plan and one's zoning. If the small-scale amendment to the comprehensive plan is passed, then we will have a motion number two for rezoning. If it's not, there's no need for motion number two. It would just basically, a no to motion number one would take out the program, and that would be that. So, that's where we're at. So
Quick question, Ms. Ann. I'm reading your statement. The reason for this to ask
Please pull your microphone forward.
The reason for this, the rezoning, I'm looking in here, is that the, you want to have short-term rentals there at the property?
Right, because I live short-term rental. I have 12 units that face right into my house.
Ms. Mosley, can you please step up to the microphone?
I live it every day. I have 12 units that look directly into all three units, all day long.
When you say that, look into
From Tuckaway Shores. If you looked at, is there any photographs?
I know where it's at. Do you live there?
I do.
Okay.
I do. We live it every day. It's a whole different world there compared to the houses south from us. It's not the same.
Understood. Thank you.
And some of the people here come to that access all the time, so they know how crazy it gets on the weekends.
It does. You have a nice place. Familiar with it.
Okay, does anybody have a motion?
I think it's the application numbers, the SSA 25-001, that we should reference.
Yes, the small-scale amendment is 25-001, 25-002, and 25-, excuse me, and those two. It's the three parcels under companion applications.
So, just the 001 and 002 is what we need to reference?
Yes, for the small-scale amendment.
Okay. I move to deny the application for small-scale amendment 25-002, and, or I guess, recommend denial of small-scale amendment A25-002 and small-scale amendment 25-001. Did I do that backwards? 001 and 002. You know where I'm going with that.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second?
A second.
I just want to make sure, because I got in trouble from Paul last time.
Okay. What's the question?
Yes.
So, the vote is a yea if you are going to deny, or find it not comprehensive?
The motion pending is
To recommend denial.
Not recommend.
Okay. He told me I couldn't do that, because I tried to do that once. He said I couldn't. So, I just want to make sure.
Double negative.
I'm sure Paul had his reasons, but my official position is, is that we need an affirmative vote. So, yea or nay, as to the pending motion.
Okay.
So, we have a motion on the floor, and it's seconded. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, the motion is denied. Thank you very much.
And then, just record purposes, there will be no motion on R25001 or 002, because the zoning request is moot. I would ask if Ms. Embridge could just go ahead and be available momentarily after the hearing, if anybody has any questions. Thank you. And I did want to state one other thing. For the property owners, there is an appeal process, and if you have questions about that, feel free to come forward.
This still goes to council, the city council?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we had, I had a card that said, "New business." Was that, Scott, was that you again, or did that was for that? Okay, okay, thank you. Okay. Do we have any reports from the building official?
I do not have anything tonight.
That makes it easy.
I, let me get the microphone. I have nothing to report tonight.
All right. Thank you very much. Any unfinished business from anybody? No? Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
I'll pass on that one.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming.